Okay, we'll call it over to the regular meeting of Dayton City Council for I R S 27. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll need a motion in second for the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Changes?
I do have an add, if I can add item J1, just to approve Dayton lines gambling for a permanent present, for a permanent location at Fisher Farms.
Okay, any other changes? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries, five to zero. We're on to consent. Need a motion in a second.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Let's see here. I have a couple. One, Marty, this is for you, in the payment of claims, there was a bill for $12,730 from Hennepin County for snow plowing.
Yeah.
I'm wondering what that was about.
As for the interchange, they plowed the interchange from eighty-one to Brockton and back. So that's, that was the agreed upon maintenance figure that was discussed when the interchange was built.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that a fixed cost, by the way?
No, it changes. They review it every year.
But it's not like a personal kind of a deal?
Second.
It's not a per time thing?
No.
I was just curious.
No, they're gonna be doing it all the time with their maintenance.
Then I also had a question on item G. And this relates to the E D A bylaws. And I'm wondering, because the change was made for John to be the executive sponsor of that meeting, it mentions signing documents. So do, do we have a policy around signature authority? And I guess my question is, does John normally have that signature authority, or is that something new with this set of bylaws?
It would be something new with this set of bylaws. So signers for the city are Amy, the mayor, and I believe the vice mayor yourself comes in our fashion. But official signers are technically Amy, the mayor, and yourself. So I'm able to sign in lieu if Amy's not available or whatever, but other than that, John is technically not a signing authority of the city.
So at one time for the E D A, there was the clerk role that was in the E D A as well. And I don't know that that's realistic.
Yeah, well, I think if the, if John's gonna have that role, he should probably have that authority, but I wonder if we shouldn't have a policy that lays out who can sign for what?
And we can lay out in the bylaws if you'd like to, related to the E D A.
It doesn't, doesn't need to be there, just a citywide policy on who's got the authority to sign documents for.
We have a general one for the city, but we could probably make one for, in totals for everybody and then so on.
I would just wanna make sure that it's consistent.
Sure to say.
Across the board, yeah.
Just an overview of that policy.
That's all I have.
I'm gonna add on to that, as long as Dave brought that up. That conversation to change from Zach to, to John was pretty much spurred on by Matt's conversation, that you two sat down and had that conversation. Is that how you agree that it's your best use?
So I am an employee of the city, so if the city would like to see me utilized with the E D A, I'm most certainly able to do that. But I am spread thin with other responsibilities, so dividing up my time is, what the best the city feels is, what it's expected of me is fine. If you guys feel like the best use of time is having John there at the E D A, I would say that's acceptable and it's appropriate for other communities that I've been in. The city administrator can be there, but typically if there is a community development director in the role, there's typically who's the liaison for those E D A type functions, just 'cause it mimics that community development planning area so closely. But again, I'm a city staff employee, and whatever than anybody else is, and I'm directed by the council of where you'd like me to work at, so. But I'm only one person, and I'm doing two jobs, so having me the E D A liaison may or may not be the best use of my time, that's up to the city council to decide.
The reason I ask is, is I know that E D A would prefer you.
Sure.
I mean, that's the way it was set up, and that's the way the E D A voted on it.
Sure.
And when that conversation came up, I kinda went along with it, because I thought you guys had that conversation, and that was your message to Matt, was this is my best use of time if I'm not there.
Yeah, I mean, I think the best use of my time is wherever I can spend it to propel the city the most, and spending my time as liaison of the E D A doesn't, it takes away from my time being a city administrator to keep moving the city forward, so. Again, if that's the best use of my time, that's fine by me, just wanna make that clear. I'm not saying it can't be at one or the other, but.
Yep.
And we also talked internally, it doesn't remove Zach's responsibilities as being the finance director, which also might have him attending an E D A meeting.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I'll still be around, and it's not like I'm gonna be gone.
I mean, I'm gonna say probably the biggest time consumption is preparing for the meeting, not attending the meeting itself.
Very much true.
So attending the meetings an hour and a half a month, prepping it is gonna be quite a bit long.
Yeah, it's four, five hours a month, or more, depending on what you're doing.
I would say it's not, maybe it's inconsistent in our recent history, but you know, when, when Tina was still here, she had both development director and city administrator roles, so I don't know which hat she was wearing at the E D A, but there, it kinda was the community development director that was at those meetings.
That would be correct. So like I said, in other communities that I've worked in, it's always been the community development director who's been the E D A liaison. Now, if there is not one, then it's considered the city administrators at that point, because they are doing that community development director position. But typically, it's the community development director position that does that liaison work.
Sure. I had one.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I had one other comment about the bylaws, and it's on page two, section one, and it says, when, appointment of commissioners is what this relates to, and it says, when a commissioner leaves office, commissioners will serve until a successor has been appointed and installed. And that would be new for us, I mean, when people leave, they just leave.
They leave, yeah.
Yeah, I think it says it in every commission that we have. So whether they choose, you know, if we have someone willing, that's great, but whether they choose to follow that or not, yeah, it's not enforceable.
That's the expectation, but, yeah.
The language did come from the other commissions, that's where it came from, so.
I guess it can be there, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have enforced it.
We can most certainly strike it or amend it if you'd like.
It's up to you. It just didn't seem to match our practice, and I thought we should have the bylaws match what we actually do.
I don't have a preference with the way, as I think about this, as you bring it up, to me, the upside is, is that someone may come in and say, listen, I'm done on whatever commission, I'll stay on for a month or two, we guys should have figured this out, so you have the people. It gives us more upside, I think, than it does downside. That's my initial thought, is, as we talk about it, but I've only thought about it for three minutes.
I think people are gonna do that anyways. I mean, you're not gonna leave somebody in the marge, unless you got something that comes up that just says, you gotta bail on this, and you, I agree with Dave, it's kind of a meaningless statement, but whether or not we remove it.
Yeah, if nobody has a strong feeling about it, it doesn't have to change for me.
Anything else?
No.
I've got something. So the, the item E, the Riverwalk third edition, so I know Zach and I talked about this, but last time, we got questions from the, a lot of emails I got from people that live on King's View, because when Riverwalk opened up, it was, as to use the term I got from the emails, a train of semis going down the road as new building materials were being brought in. So it is listed, you and I talked about this, I'm just gonna say it, but you, it is listed in there that the appropriate road in and out of that development for the construction is Pioneer Parkway, and so I don't know if there is something we can do to put up signs that say residential use only beyond this point at some of those roads and exits, because I got a lot of emails and a lot of neighbors that were upset that all of a sudden there were a bunch of semis going through, and first I didn't think, it's like, okay, yeah, with this building, you kinda expect it, but I think it was Jason that said one semi with the equivalent of a hundred and seventy-some thousand cars going down the road, and so it does take a lot more wear and tear on the roads. And since we did redo some of those roads, I'd like to see them last as long as possible. So I don't know how we get them to follow that better, but I think that'd be helpful. And then, just a reminder that, you know, we have a sign policy, so making sure that as those are being built, we're not having ten thousand M I signs on the corner of one intersection would be great. So.
Noted. Anybody else?
I got a question on J, the silt seeder for Marty, not about price or anything. The availability of the, we're in that program, I think, for the share, the lake sharing program.
Yeah.
Would this give us the ability to kinda give back, in that matter?
Yes.
Okay, basically, I didn't see it mentioned in there, I just wanted to make sure that if we're, if we're using, we're actually providing availability too.
Yeah, and that would be part of it. That's the same with all of our equipment, you know, that's available to them if we're not using it, and that, you know, likewise for them with us.
Okay, cool, thank you.
With the program, Marty.
Second.
Let's say we borrow a piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Motor blows up.
On their equipment, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does this, this co-op, this, do they, how do they handle that?
I think we worked through that, that was through, it's gonna be either our insurance if it's our equipment, or their insurance if it's their equipment.
It's the owner of the equipment, it's, yeah, the insurance carries on with the equipment, so if we damage something from, say Corcoran, their insurance would cover that, if they damage our equipment, then our insurance would cover that.
But this is that, that program we, we bought into to protect our, our, our equipment from, not necessarily accidents, but maintenance problems. Are they in those same programs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, consent is passed, five to zero. We will move on to open forum. Anybody here for open forum? These are for items not on the agenda. Is anybody in line?
If you're here for open forum, if you can use that raise your hand function.
All right, and we'll close open forum. Staff consultant council updates. Zach?
Good evening, mayor, members of council, I have two updates for you. One is that we're still working through the federal grant related to the wellhead treatment plant. I know it's been an ongoing disaster, but we're still working with SHPO to get them to make a decision. There was a letter sent from HUD to SHPO, so HUD is our federal agents that are helping us with this process, and they are trying to help us continue to push SHPO to give a determination. SHPO, again, is the state historical preservation office, and so we need them to give us a determination, and they are denying to do that, so.
I thought they had a thirty day.
Yep, so when they deny it, and then we respond back, they have now ninety days to respond.
Geez!
Yes. We did respond back to the federal government, hoping they could just step in and give us a determination, however, they have said that they are not going to do that, because it's SHPO's determination and not theirs, so.
So I could push it out and have that three months.
We are.
And that was three months we had not accounted for, right?
That is correct, yeah. So we are doing whatever we can, I know that there was emails back and forth last week with, I don't know if I say Stantex team, trying to figure everything out as fast as we can, and I know that they're working on it as much as we can too, but it's frustrating for all accounts, so.
What does the contractors say about that? Are they still?
They're waiting for, yep, they're still waiting for us. They are, do have another project that's in the near region that they're basically reallocated, there's, I'm gonna call them their troops, or their workers too. So they are still in the area, and it's a larger project, so they're probably being helped by their community, you know, but, yeah, frustrating for all involved. And then, as a reminder, next week on Monday, we are closed for Labor Day. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Amy?
I just have an update on the, Hennepin County has the new recycling requirements, and I have sent that out to you, I believe. I can send out further information, but you'll probably see by the end of the year, one of the requirements is that we're gonna have to start licensing garbage haulers, so that will be something new as a required, so there'll be so many required options, and then there'll be some optional things, and you, we have to come up with a certain score then to meet the new.
Mm, mm-hmm.
Standards.
Okay. And this is just recycling haulers, you're saying?
No, this would be garbage haulers.
Garbage haulers?
Yep.
Yeah, garbage and recycling, refuse and recycling.
Licensing, like at a city level, or?
Yep, so I brought this concern up early on when they were accepting, I think commissioners may have even reached out to council members. I was concerned and wanting comments to the county, 'cause they have their open commenting, I believe. It still might be open, I, I'll forward that email again.
Please, yeah.
I, I think it will be a group effort, and things need to be done, but I think there are some requirements coming our way that are going to impact us financially and other ways.
Yeah.
So just a fair warning, you'll be seeing some.
Are they providing all the, like, requirements for?
The licensing.
The licensing and the scoring of?
Yep, so that's the document that they have, that it's almost adopted or official of what your new requirements will be, and then what the optional ones will be, and the scoring of those.
You're not talking about organics, right? You're talking about.
It's out of the rule included, so it's, it's all garbage, recycling, organics, but, but all the new requirements that was.
It's more umbrella control.
This is a Hennepin County thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's 'cause we're in Hennepin County. You got.
Correct.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Marty?
Mayor and council, I don't have an update tonight.
Sweet.
All right.
Mayor and council, same for me.
All right.
The Met council came out with policy plans, so staff is reviewing it, will generate kind of a summary for council's review.
We threw a dart at it.
This is, yeah, this is related to the note that you mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, mayor, related to the four units an acre, and other things too. So if staff has put together comments, graciously appreciate John putting those comments together in a memo, and those will be to council, believe in the next council meeting, that's our goal.
This may seem farfetched, but this is something that we can have Amy look at and see what our options are.
This is comment period, so we can provide any kind of.
I know, but what I guess what I'm getting at is comment, comment periods are for, what I might say, wasting time. But when they come out with this, what our, what our options are.
Sure.
So the comment period is open until October seventh, and the Met council will be holding a public hearing on September twenty-fifth, so the goal is to have a council response for that twenty-fifth public hearing.
All right, okay. Is that it?
That's it.
No updates here?
Got one thing, it's been brought to my attention, that we need to do something with our sign ordinance, because community events are getting their signs taken down, and the event is for the benefit of the public, but yet we don't wanna promote the public event. Now, the only time that, and it, this week it happened to two particular, and coincidence or not, I don't know if it is, Dayton Heritage Days had their signs taken down, and so did the Dayton Car Show had their signs taken down. My question would be, have we ever had any of the city-sponsored event signs taken down? Because it seems to me like we're targeting a specific group, like our Easter egg hunt. Those signs are out there, just like the Dayton Car Show signs, but I don't know that we take those down.
The ordinance related to the sign ordinance passed after that Easter egg hunt item.
Well, that's just one.
But I'm just using an example.
Yeah, concert in the park, that.
Correct. I don't know if those signs were put up in the right of way or not, if they were, they should not have been, whether they were city signs or not.
The city signs?
Yep, no matter, the ordinance applies to the city as well as everybody else, so it should not have been put in the right of way if there were. That was incorrectly done, so, but it's not, we're not picking at anybody or making an example of anybody, it's the ordinance that was passed by the council, and city staff has to abide by the ordinance passed, so.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter who it, who or what.
I, I think the city, city signs are exempt, so example, the watering, the uneven watering ban.
That's, that's fine, that's a, that's a public notice sign, I don't know that I have an issue with that, but if we start taking down Dayton Car Show signs and Dayton Heritage signs, but not party in the park or concert in the park, there's a problem there.
Yeah, I don't believe there was any exemptions on that ordinance, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, there were not, there, there are obvious ones where it's like the uneven, I mean, the development type signs, the signs that are required by government were, were exempted, they may have been exempted not directly in the ordinance, but it was clear that they weren't applicable, but, and we discussed this at the time, that what we were doing was throwing out, in my opinion, throwing out the baby with the bathwater, and that's where we ended up with that ordinance. So it is frustrating.
And FYI, I guess.
Yeah.
See, that's great, except city staff is just fighting by the ordinances that were passed by council, so.
Well, then we have to be.
Why don't everyone knows we're not picking them.
Take them all down.
Yep, we can only do so many at a time when we remove them every week, or once weekly.
There's many more signs being taken down than just event signs.
Yeah, you should see the back garage.
I've heard.
It's full.
These are pretty healthy signs, too.
Yeah.
That's it.
Travis, you have anything? No, I'm good. I have nothing. Did we get everybody? Thank you.
I've got nothing.
Okay. All right, we are on to council business, item K.
Feels like a long walk over. So item K, concept plan for the Holland projects, this is located 11085 French Lake Road. So generally, the, to give a kind of a quick overview, the project is on the south side of French Lake Road, right on the border of Dayton and Champlin. The whole project is twenty-five lots on both the Champlin side and the Dayton side. On the Dayton side, the plan is for, I'm gonna say about two lots, or in proportions of two other lots, as well as a stormwater pond. What the developer is really looking for, first of all, is if there is support from the council to either, I'm gonna say annex either a portion or all of the property, this western property, into Champlin. So this is kind of the first question that is posed to the council. The property boundary is right here, I should say, the city boundary is right here where we have Dayton and then Champlin. This whole project is, is intended to be a continuation of the development that's to the south. And then there's other questions about the plant itself, but this is sort of the first question. The second question, I'll come back to this, is generally, is if there's anything that the council would like to change about this, so, you know, I'll go back to the big picture. With the concept plan, there's no formal action, so there's no approval or denial. The intent is to get feedback from each council member, so whatever one council member say, says could be completely different than the next one, you all have the same value for your opinions. And then the developer takes that information, figures out how it makes sense, moves on with the preliminary plan. But once again, the main question here is if the council is supportive of changing the municipal boundary to either include a portion of the project, so we'll call it like drawing the line to match the, drawing the city boundary to matching the property line, versus taking the entire property and changing the boundary so that this whole project is in Champlin.
Can I ask a question? Who's asking for the annexation? Is it the developer of the city or both? City of Champlin?
I, my, so it is the developer, but the Champlin is also requesting it. I don't know if that's a formal action in Champlin's council, but that's my understanding from Champlin's staff.
We do have the developer here as well to answer questions if you'd like them to.
Where would the pond access be? I didn't see that.
It, it's not shown on here, so I, what would end up happening is there'd be a wider drainage utility easement along one of these lots that would give access, provide access.
Comments?
Yeah.
Or, or did you have more?
I'll start with, yeah, if you have comments or questions.
I don't see the advantage to the annexation piece, I think we're giving something away and we're not getting anything for it, so. So if this, as it stands right now, I wouldn't be interested in that. I also think what we get out of this development is a pond and two houses, which seems like kind of the, the short end of something. I think that pond could go somewhere else in that, in that proposed development, there's an existing pond that could be expanded. And I'm not a civil engineer, so I'm not gonna pretend I know how much stormwater needs to go where, but I think that, that where, where it's placed is of no advantage to the city of Dayton, and the two houses that are proposed in the development don't.
Justify?
For me, as that stands. I also don't like the deviation, if it's R1, the narrative talks about reduction in lot sizes from our standards, and I'm not a fan of that either.
Okay. I agree with what David said about the annexation, the lot sizes, and the layout, and our packet on page one fifty-nine, there was a layout, had a bunch of red on it, I think the city staff must have drawn some.
Yeah, that's what it looked like.
Yeah, so I don't mind that, that looked like it was better. I know part of the concern is where this road comes into Dayton, and then the next development over the queue-up space there to get out onto one hundred and twenty-first, and I think that the plan that was drawn, I'm guessing by the city staff, was, kinda takes that into account, 'cause it shifts that road down a little bit more, so I think that makes more sense for a, a in-and-out access and queue, queue space and the further development to the west, so those are my comments.
Was that, John, was that your?
That's my scribble.
I didn't see any.
The better the straight line drawing was Jason's, I don't have that on the PowerPoint.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was just kinda, 'cause I didn't see any, any text associating with that, but it, it did, it looked like a possible solution to the issue.
Sure.
I mean, I know I, you know, I was at the planning commission meeting, and I kind of agree with all of their findings too. You know, I'm okay with, with finding some way to accommodate, you know, making the rules consistent across the development between Dayton and Champlin. I don't know if there's any abrupt deviations, but I'd be okay with merging those rules. But, you know, I, I guess I agree with most of the planning commission's findings.
As far as the municipal boundary goes?
Yeah, that, the, the, that road in there, it seemed like that close to one twenty-one is problematic for a couple reasons, and one is the ghosted intersection. And, yeah, I think that's, that's the bulk of it.
And is that, that second intersection even allowed, or that second access to?
I, I don't think we've had conversations with Hennepin County.
I suspect it's far enough away, but I don't know.
Mayor and council, I believe that that intersection, if there was one, would be the only one allowed in this area by the county, based on spacing and requirements.
On the ghost plating or?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe the original ghost plaid was provided at some point, I believe, to the county, I don't know, I'd have to ask the developer that.
I don't know, but you are correct, there's blood access.
Yeah, correct, I believe that, that is the only access that will be allowed in the area.
We don't find more plaid.
We don't find a plat.
Correct.
Sure.
Are we to the point where anybody has any questions for the developer?
Yeah, I'm done. I think we're, I think we're going to get there.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess go right ahead. Yeah, I don't have anything to add. I mean, you've already spoken to everything that, between planning commission and comments currently made, I just, I don't see a benefit to getting a pond.
That answers all the questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, pass it along, but.
Fresh off the press, Lee.
Yeah. Yeah, so this, this is an adjustment of the ghost plat that addresses, relines this intersection on the ghost plat, so that there is queuing.
And then just for the record, can we have your name?
Good evening. Nathan Fair with Landmark Development and Jonathan Homes, address is 13432 Hanson Boulevard. And I apologize, I thought we had an overhead projector here at City Hall, but the plat that's being passed around just shows the concern that the planning commission had about stacking. And again, I think John's done a good job. The land to the west, we don't own that land, it's not under contract, so it's just a, simply a ghost plat. And the planning commission really got hung up on stacking and how that area would develop. But as part of the application, we always show just in the future, how could something develop? So the ghost plat that's being passed around would definitely eliminate the concern for stacking of the vehicles at the intersection. And there is only really two entrances that the county would allow, the one-off Arrow Wood and then possibly Deerwood Lane. But based on my experience, it's very challenging to buy land from Hattaway County Park District. So you're really, you're really down to the one entrance. But really, the reason why I submitted this application was, we are wondering, we as a developer and also the city of Champlin, is the city of Dayton open to annexation, the full two acres of parcel into the city of Champlin? There was another concept plan that was drawn by city staff that's in your packet. It's a very grid pattern that certainly would work, too, that allows the two, actually there's four lots that would be in Dayton and then the stormwater pond in the southwest corner. The issue there is, it's just, it's a very grid pattern. You're not going to get your high-end homes. What we've worked really hard with the city of Champlin on is coming up with the best plan to create high-end homes for Champlin and then ultimately eventually funnel into the city of Dayton. To go ahead and try and do one application with the city of Dayton and then one application for the city of Champlin with only two lots, it just kind of becomes a nightmare, to be honest with you. So the simple, very honest solution, I'm just asking for it to be annexed and to keep it very simple. So I have one city that I get to work with. The water and sewer would come from Champlin. If we do this current plat, we would have to have a joint powers agreement for water and sewer from the city of Champlin into Dayton for these two lots. Snow plowing for 150 plus or minus feet. The stormwater pond that everybody says that's, you know, we only get a stormwater pond, the benefit to Dayton is when the land to the west develops, and we would have to work with Champlin to make sure they're okay with this, we would do a regional stormwater agreement. So when the land develops to the west, this stormwater pond that we're presenting is oversized right now, so the stormwater pond, or the stormwater would go into, call it Champlin's pond, but Dayton would have the right to use Champlin's stormwater pond if the land was annexed in. So there has been a lot of time and energy put into this plat, working with the city of Champlin. And again, the only way to find out if Champlin and Dayton are willing to annex it is due to concept plan, is what the city administrator and I talked offline about. So that's, that's why we're here. I really didn't want planning commission to get hung up on, again, the ghost plat and how everything has developed and lot sizes, because ultimately it's just easier if I can deal with one city. But the direct benefit to the city of Dayton would be, this is, we'd call it a regional stormwater pond. And, you know, fire, okay, if there's two, if for some reason a house started on fire, now you've got to come through Champlin to get there. There are some other small things, but the main one would be the regional pond. With that, I hope I'm not putting anybody on the spot here, but the city planner is here from the city of Champlin. He may be able to answer any questions also for you guys, but I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have, and I appreciate staff's time so far. I haven't had a lot of time with staff. We just simply submitted the application to really see what the council's feeling is on the annexation. And ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, if it doesn't work, I get that. It could just come back with one single-family home on the Dayton side with a driveway coming off the county road and then, you know, still a large regional stormwater pond. This, my original plan that I shared with the city of Champlin was having just one home in Dayton, and there wasn't a connection into Dayton. And when we got into working with both cities, they said, you know, we would like to see connection for future development.
Here's where I, here's where I would go on this. I mean, to me, this is, to me, it's about business. You're in business, we can be in business. I would personally be open to the annexation thing if there's more benefit than just the pond to Dayton. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, you make 25 homes, you're going to make some money.
Yeah, and I, I think that's really important to note for the public. It's not 25 homes, and the public notice that went out was inaccurate also from the city of Dayton, and I know some of the Champlin residents were calling me and saying, hey, there's too many homes. The total plat, there's 15 new homes together in the city of Champlin and in to get with the city of Dayton. So I think that's really important, because the public notice had shown, I think, 17. So 15 total new lots between both cities.
Yeah. In, immaterial, I guess, to an extent, but you're still going to make some money. And my side on the deal is if Champlin gets 17 new homes, they're going to collect tax dollars for the next 50 years. So you guys are all making money and Dayton gets a stormwater pond. Maybe there's some sort of a number that comes up that Dayton gets as far as a financial, some financial coverage on the deal. That'd be a conversation that I think that should be had, but, I mean, if nobody's open to the conversation, then it doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think it gets quite complicated on that conversation. I mean, at the end of the day, as a landowner, we have a right just to build one single-family home there and that, you know, and ultimately we don't get the connection point then. I think the long-term benefit if both communities want to play together is we're coming together, putting long-term connection. We have a very good land plan versus this grid pattern where I think there was eight single-family homes backing up to a busy county road. We've limited how many homes would back up to the county road. Again, the stormwater pond is in the right spot, without getting too technical, for EOFs and, and Jason's plan worked out well, too, with the stormwater pond and the, whatever, up against the park, but it's this grid pattern, you don't get high-end home values when you just have straight roads. And again, backing up to a busy road. We've limited how many homes back up to a busy road. So, just wanted to present, if it's not, you know, if it's not open for discussion on the annexation, to get it, I mean, there really isn't much give and take. It's, there's a regional pond that allows the land to the west to be developed in a high-end manner.
Okay.
And I don't want to be rude on how I'm delivering that message, but that's how simple it really is in my mind.
John, the one option you showed with just the little jog in the, in the property in the Dayton, in the, yeah, that middle one, that leaves us with, you know, we, we get a house out of the deal, but primarily what my concern would be is that we now own that pond.
The rights to maintain it, right?
And what's that mean?
More work for Marty.
I know. Can we like quantify that or do we know what that liability is?
You wouldn't want that liability. And publicly, that, that's not a liability that you'd want, because again, we're benefiting from the 12 or 14 lots in Champlin where the stormwater pond is going in there. There would have to be a mutual agreement from the city of Champlin that Champlin would actually maintain that pond. I mean, just again, being trying to be very transparent.
Well, if, I mean, if we, if, let's say you were doing the west side also in this discussion, I mean, it'd be a different discussion.
Then it would be a joint powers agreement with, this is a regional pond.
Yeah.
And maybe Jason can speak to it, too, on how it's done. You would pro-rate X amount of lots.
Yeah, you can, you can enter an agreement with maintenance based on areas or flows or however you want to craft it, but it'd be either a shared or solely assigned maintenance. So, and how this is crafted.
Either way, this is a regional pond that benefits both cities.
Yeah, I get that. I get that. It's just that that stuff on the west is.
How far out do you expect the, the ghost platted area? When do you expect that to develop?
It, it could be 20 years. I mean, you know, there's one landowner that is lukewarm of selling, but you have fi, I think there's five landowners there. And ideally, to put together the nicest neighborhood, you'd want to assemble all parcels. Again, I guess what I'm looking for is just clear direction. If there's, if there really is an interest in annexing the land into Champlin, then it at least allows me to go back and say, okay, we won't show a connection into Dayton. And then ultimately.
Was Champlin really going to like that? I mean, we keep hearing having two accesses in case of emergency. It's good for everyone, so I'm going to guess Champlin's going to want two accesses.
Yeah, to refresh your memory, I just did Bauer Berry Farm.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a through street that stubbed right up to Champlin. And there was no connection.
Still, yeah.
Still.
Yeah.
Cities don't have to connect. In the perfect world, connection is, is good, but it, it doesn't have to connect, no.
Wasn't there a planned connection there from the city of Dayton? And you decided not to connect?
There was direction from the city of Champlin not to connect.
Correct. Yeah, it's a little different on Bauer Berry Farm, I think, because there is another connection in that neighborhood. You get to go to the west, or to the east.
Right.
Through 131st and then down through Valley Forge.
Save Valley Forge, right, yeah.
So there is a little bit of a difference here. I think Champlin needs this connection more than we do, to be honest with you, because they have 100 homes in that, in that neighborhood there. And I think the city planner could probably speak to it as well, is that you kind of need another connection in that neighborhood, especially if you're going to, you know, have that many homes there.
Yeah, and again, I don't want to get into that.
I mean, I don't want to get into it, but you did mention something about Bauer Berry Farm, which isn't exactly true. So I know that you say that there's, there's a through street there, which should have been connected, but that's a Champlin, not us.
Okay.
I'll also add, in your comment, you don't want roads backed up to a busy street. You've got half a dozen, a dozen plus homes backed up to that busy street, so I have a hard time believing that's going to change anything. And this whole grid idea, I don't think having a straight street is going to affect your ability to sell homes. So I, I.
No worries, again, I'm not.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I feel like you're selling us a, you're telling us what, what you may think, but I don't know if there's any real merit to it, is what I'm trying to say.
You know what? Again, at the end of the day, that's, I think I've got clear direction that you guys aren't open to the annexation, and one single-family can be built on the Holland parcel, and there's, you know, we can just leave it at that.
And you're not open to any, any compensation back?
I don't know what the compensation, it's just, I don't know what the compensation is.
That's a conversation that can be had. I mean, I don't have a number in my mind, but.
No.
I'm not comfortable making that decision, like, right here.
Right, no, no, I understand that, but that's what the conversation they're going to have. I mean, you get Champlin together, you get Nathan together, and you get Zach together, and if there's a number that you come to, I mean, the guy, the people that benefit the most are you and Champlin, without question.
I can, we, we could just say no and save them all the work, too.
Ultimately, if I can just get clear direction that the, this council is not open to annexing the two acres into Champlin.
Does Champlin want to give us the other acres this way?
Swap that.
I just.
Like, I'm not here to.
Too far into it.
Their request is, is the council open to two acres? And if there is not, you know, if you're not open to it, I understand that. There's a regional pond that would benefit the land to the west. That's really the, I guess, only benefit, if you will, to the city of Dayton. Do you know whether it works or doesn't?
So if the annexation doesn't happen, how do you do the pond? Are we, I mean, do you, do you do a, you know, a two-acre development with one house and a pond? Is that really what ends up happening?
Yeah.
And is that a good solution? I mean, it seems like.
I don't know if we've done that before. Look at Jason and Marty on history. We've had a stormwater pond.
I can picture it.
Benefiting a plat that's not part of the plat.
No, you probably haven't had that request. It's a unique request, but.
I mean, we've had offsite ponding, for example, Moss Point, right here, we used a regional pond facility, and it was outside of the property area that was planted for treatment.
But it was still.
It's not exactly the same here, but it's, no. And it certainly wasn't across the municipal boundary, but it was offsite, out of the plat area.
I'm sure Mercedes and the townhouses want to develop that.
Yeah.
We expanded that pond.
But, I mean, that was still within our boundaries, right?
Right.
Yeah, so it's kind of a, I mean, here, what we'd end up with is somehow they, they potted a house, and the pond would be on our, on our, in our boundary.
Either way, we're getting a pond and a house, because what I'm hearing is, we're not here to talk, we're here to either say yes or no.
I'm trying to be very transparent. Those are the options that are on the menu right now.
If, if it's annexed, then we don't. That's the.
Correct. Yeah, but if we don't annex it, we get a house and a pond.
Yeah.
I have a question for the city engineer. Can you, or maybe even the city of Champlin planner, can you drain stormwater into another community without a JPA? I don't know if you, I don't know if you can, that's a general question, I literally don't know.
Great question.
Stormwater rules would probably prevent that from occurring without acknowledgement or agreement between the cities. I would think you'd want to enter an agreement to at least acknowledge you're there and then assign responsibility for maybe.
I guess, just a general question, go, I mean, again, I'm not saying you can't build a pond and a, and a house there, but then you have to have a JPA from the council, and if they're not going to want a pond, then it's going to really be difficult to have a pond, and then, no.
This was easier when, when we had the crappy ghost plating, but now that you've given us this different ghost plating, some of those issues go away. And, and I don't know where we go from here, so now we have a planning commission look at what we're talking about.
Correct. I mean, this is still the concept plan, so I guess the, the general question still is the annexation.
And I, I really.
Yep. That's a general question, is, yeah, you want to annex it. If you don't, then, it's different for the developer, because.
Yeah, that's.
I feel like there probably is, even if we don't annex it, I feel like there's a middle ground here if everyone's willing to play ball. That, that's what I feel, at least. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but I think there's a way to make this work without annexing the land.
It does seem like.
If the parties want to work together, which I think we're willing to work on a solution that follows that way, what I'm hearing is you don't want that. You either.
Yeah, it gets, it just gets challenging. You've got different park dedication fees, now you're marketing this neighborhood, you got two lots in Dayton, it just, the, the easy solution.
I'm not saying it's not easy. I'm not saying this, I'm not saying my solution's the easiest solution. I'm saying there is a good solution in the middle here.
Yeah.
Where everyone walks away and no one's 100% happy, but we can make it work.
Sure.
And to me, that's a good solution.
Yeah. The annexing just, it does bother me, because we walk away with nothing. But.
And that's respectful. I mean, if that's your opinion on it, it's fine.
Well, I mean, it sounds like that's where we're at.
Okay.
Is that where we're at, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
That's where I'm at. I guess that's where we're at.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. AML, Park Improvements.
So we have had the, the project delayed a little bit, and I know the council has had some questions about this, so I have invited Paul to give us an update on where we're at with irrigation, bridges, and what we can achieve this year, and what we're looking to do for next year and the time, an approximate timeline for that project.
This is not it.
Yeah. Good evening.
Hey, Paul.
Paul Kingas, office address 14165 James Road in Rogers. Home address 18601 152nd Avenue in Dayton. Marty asked me to attend to answer any questions you have regarding many of the projects that we're looking at. I know there's been delays that haven't been well received by some of the council members, but there's good reasons for those delays. And as a citizen of Dayton, one of my main goals is to make sure that we make the best use of whatever funding resources you put in front of the Parks Commission and myself as your park design consultant. So there is no agenda. There was nothing in the, the packet to respond to, so fire away.
I guess, one of the last updates, Marty said that there was some, just backups that were happening. I guess maybe you can just kind of speak to some of those regarding as far as like what those things are, you know, what kind of hiccups we came across, and.
Sure.
Maybe just from your, your perspective.
Yeah, so just so everyone's clear what the projects are. At, early in the year, we were looking at trying to lump three different design projects into one bid document, oh, for public bid, that would have included Phase Three of LC Stevens Park, which was generally gathering shelter, picnic shelter, potential revision to the performance area, and some minor ancillary improvements, a gate at the old entrance, park signage, and irrigation. The second project was Park Service Area 21, which was the area around Sundance Woods. That's essentially a new neighborhood park. And the third project was a small improvement to Iown Gardens, previously developed or owned park, now controlled by the city. And that was primarily a very small seeding area and irrigation. Through a number of different avenues, I guess, we encountered delays. The, the neighborhood meetings at Sundance Woods did not happen until late February. And that basically got us through conceptual design. And so in any design project, you have conceptual design, design development, and construction design. We weren't even through design development. We didn't have firm layouts in mind at that point. We didn't exactly know what the project elements were. There were some budget considerations, there were some land ownership considerations. You don't control all of the land that that park is intended to cover. So the biggest mistake that, that I made in this whole process was telling Marty yes. I told him that I thought we could meet a, a design schedule that was really aggressive, and it wasn't true. We weren't far enough along, we didn't have an existing conditions survey out at LC Stevens Park, because of the topo changes that were made during Phase Two. And it just became a situation where I couldn't in good conscience commit to putting out construction documents that would have resulted in good bid results. And it would have been foolish to put out those documents knowing that change orders were likely or probable. It's not a good position for me, it's not a good position for the council. And I've heard loud and clear over the years that you guys don't like changeovers. We try to avoid them, and quite honestly, we've done a really good job of constructing the parks within the budgets that you've allocated. So we have a very strong history of, of managing those well and maximizing the value to the city. So the bridge project at LC Stevens currently is proposed to be separated as a standalone project. It's a large enough construction project. The bridge design is done, the soil borings are done. The contractors have told us they would prefer to do that project during winter conditions where the stormwater flowing through the ravine that that bridge covers would be less of a challenge. So the current thought is to put those documents out for bid. It will exceed the threshold of 100 and 75,000. Put those out for bid early fall, October, most likely, end of October, and then construct it through the winter months. What that doesn't cover is any improvements at the stage for LC Stevens, or the picnic shelter that I mentioned, or some of those small projects that really could or could not be part of a, a public design package. Those could be done separately. PSA 21, Sundance Woods, I call it, that one, we've not really clearly defined a schedule for. But the thought that Marty and I have discussed was basically operating under the same schedule that we were trying to achieve this past year, but putting it out to bid earlier in 2025. So there's a preferred bid window of generally February, March, where you try to get your documents out, people are ramping up for the season, they're getting their projects in hand. That's the window that we'd like to hit.
Paul, do you have a Gantt chart that shows any of this timing, so we can work backwards? I mean, project management, something, I mean, I work with it all the time, and they've got a chart that shows that here's the project, and here's the dates, and here's the chunks of time it's going to take to do this, and here's the next project that shows that, to, to help us understand kind of what this is looking like. Because my other concern is, I don't want to miss the next set of deadlines. And so that, putting that on paper and everyone saying, yeah, this is the timelines we've put everything to get done, then we all know what that looks like, and we're all on the same page. Because when we keep getting vague terms, it's hard to truly narrow down what that looks like. And my bigger concern is making sure that if we want to have these things done early spring, that we've got enough time, we've worked that chart backwards to ensure that we've got enough time to get it all done.
Sure. I don't work with Gantt software, but we.
You can do an Excel.
Absolutely. And we, we've laid out, between Marty and I, we've talked about many different options. There's been some adjustments that as we've pulled the irrigation out of the projects, and those are the other projects that I should note, we've been looking at irrigation for five different park sites. Basically, I think it was an internal staff request to, to try to get better grass at the park sites. You know, we built two, two and a half parks during some really droughty years, and the seed struggled to take. I think that's what started the conversation at the staff level about irrigation. So I've been tasked with putting together RFQs for irrigation and water supply and electrical supply. Because at the five different park sites, there's a mix of wells, potable water through municipal, but there's also limited power. So it's a multi-headed monster. Right now, we've broken it into two RFQs, one for irrigation, the other for water and electrical supply, which is basically wells. So three of the parks will operate off of a well, either existing or new. Two would be new, one would be existing. Other two parks, which would be Iown Gardens and the east half of Sundance Greens, would operate off of potable supply. So the documents are ready to go. We'll probably have them, and we will have them, if you want to move forward, with authorization to bid next meeting. We need to get those out on the street. But it's expensive. We're just getting pricing back this week, and it's expensive.
I don't really have anything good to say, so it's probably better I don't say anything.
I guess my surprise in this whole thing was that we, you know, we had budgeted another phase of LC Stevens for this, this year. It seemed like we'd been kind of doing the plan one year and construct the next year. And so we, we budgeted funds for that. We weren't aware until pretty late in the spring that it was not going to happen. And so I think better communication would have helped ease that pain a little bit. If, if it wasn't going to happen, it would have been nice to know before. It was, we're kind of into the season, or we expected to, to get going, get some bids out, get something done. So that for me. You mentioned the bridge being a separate, broken out as a separate project. What kind of premium do you expect us to see for winter conditions related to this construction?
In that particular case, it's not necessarily a premium, because you're paying a premium either way. You're paying a premium for de-watering if it's an actively flowing creek, you know, rain like last night. Or, you know, frozen condition, you're paying winter conditions. So I think the intent is to make that more certain, knowing that it's going to be frozen and, and having a known issue to work around rather than the unknown, which is, when is it going to rain? It didn't rain for two and a half years, very much, and now it rains all the time, so.
So you, you think that there isn't much there, if at all, because of the change in what you're doing here?
I think it's an expensive project. It's always been an expensive project. But I don't think that we are paying extraordinarily more for winter conditions than we would be for de-watering and the, the mother nature unknown that a contractor would have to build into their bid to, to construct with no certainty about.
Okay, well, that's fair. Are we past the point where we're providing soil conditions? Because everybody seems to be surprised that there's mud by the river.
We are going to offer the construction, or the, the soil borings as part of the construction documents, and let them make their own interpretations based on that information. And that information was not available when the bids were received for the 2022 pit, which is what you're referring to. For that project, we put it on the contractor to do basically a design-build bridge. Why did we do that? We did that so that you wouldn't have to pay for all the engineering, the soil borings, and everything that you would have to pay upfront. It's not, it's not saving you money, it's just, are you spending money upfront before you know what the bids are? Or are you spending money paying the contractor to do that? It's six of one, half dozen of the other, different.
Not, not quite. I mean, if, if we don't know it's, you know, if we don't know it's going to be an add, then yeah, the total ends up being the same, but it's not in our budget. I would like less surprises.
Yeah.
If we have to do our own soil boring, so we don't get that, that we get on every project, unexpected soil conditions.
Right.
Everybody I hear from says soil in Dayton is, is not good for building. And so how is that still a surprise? But we seem to get it on every project we do.
I don't think anybody likes surprises, council member. In all fairness, you as the council added Phase Three of LC Stevens, Phase Two of LC Stevens, very late in the game. That was not originally part of the 2022 pit package. We worked really hard to get documents ready, but there was no time to do those soil borings. That's why we took the approach that we did to put it on a design-build contractor, contractor basis for the bridge itself. That was one element of that project. But it was, there was no time to do what you're asking for that particular incident.
But we have not, we have time now.
Sure. And we have the data now.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, we can't fix what's been done, but I just like not to keep repeating ourselves. That's because the borings came back nasty, which.
Yep. The soil came back very poor.
So it does seem like, you know, I, I hear what you're saying.
I, I will own any, any fault for myself. We, as consultants, tend to be not yes men in a negative way, but we try to, we try to meet our clients' needs, right? It's a service business. We don't sell drawings, we sell a service. My mistake was saying yes. It was never a realistic timeframe. I should have said no. And you would not have found anybody else that would have met that timeframe either. So I've given a lot back to this city in being a member of the Planning Commission for over 10 years. I do many projects that you never see, that you don't see the bill for. And I do get paid for some of my work, but I don't get paid for all of it. So you have to take some of the good with the bad. I'm a small office, and that presents certain challenges, but when I have deadlines to meet, they generally get met. I should not have said yes, but I did. And that was my fault. But it was not a realistic timeframe. It's over one and a half million dollars. At that time, it was a million and a half dollars of construction. It'll get broken out differently. You will pay a fraction to IOA that you would pay any other firm. And you might ask why? Because I can. I'm a small office. I don't have a huge overhead. I don't do it, quite frankly, for the money anymore. I do it for people that I like to work with. Fortunately, I like working with Marty. If I didn't like working with Marty, I wouldn't do the projects anymore.
Everybody likes working with Marty.
It's the accent. It's got it. To be, to be clear, Paul, I don't want to hash up the past. That's why I'm asking what the future looks like and what the, I, I think actually sitting down, whether you and Marty do it together, or you do it and send it to Marty, and Marty says, hey, can we speed this up as a stuff life? I think having that documented, so that you two are on the same page. I think, as David mentioned, it's a, to me, this is a communication breakdown somewhere. And there's a lot of moving pieces on this, there's a lot of different parks at play, plus extra ancillary things, so I could easily see how, how all of that could kind of snowball. But I think having it documented and like, okay, for this park, this is the timeline we need, and doing that out in some kind of waterfall Gantt chart would be really helpful just to document it. It's also really good, too, because if we have that, and then citizens want to know where we're at, we can post it on the site. We can say, here's the plan for the timing, what it's going to look like, here's six months out of when the public hearing's going to be. All these things are really helpful, so people can plan, and we can communicate better to the, to the citizens, like yourself, of Dayton, so everyone's in the know. So that would be my biggest takeaway from, again, not trying to place blame for what happened in the past, but if I look at this from the outside, that was the big breakdown, is I think we just didn't properly document everything, we fell behind, and then, you know. So I think we just, we need to make sure that if we need to start now on things, we're starting right now on things. And I'd rather be a month ahead than three months behind. So, and at least that's where I'd rather be than, than the upsweats. I think now, we've all come to the conclusion it's not going to happen this year. So we just need to make sure that it all gets done next year. And I think the earlier in the year we can get it done, in the spring versus the fall, where we can, it would be better, in my opinion. So that's, that's my two cents.
I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying about establishing a clear timeframe, a clear, realistic timeframe. I was very upfront with Marty. Many emails, many renditions of the schedule, and for a variety of reasons, we tried, and I failed. But I shouldn't have tried. So we will make it work. And that's the first time I've failed for you guys. So hopefully you can understand and appreciate that there's been a lot of projects that have gone very well.
I feel free, I do consulting for a living, so the whole adage of under-promise, over-deliver, I think is one that maybe we missed on this one.
Yeah. What I think also needs to happen is having very clear, there was a lot of renditions, a lot of park commission versus city council versus staff meetings. There was not a clear process for making decisions that were based on real numbers. You guys had some Cadillac dreams and Pinto budgets that created some unique challenges. And I'm going to push very hard with what we know now about some of these things and say, yes, you can, if you have another quarter million, or whatever those numbers are, I'm just throwing out random numbers, but, you know, we're not magicians. We don't make the bids come in how we want them to come in. And you've got some really hard decisions to make, and, you know, we'll help you do that. But there's some really hard decisions that have to be made about what is the future of LC Stevens. PSA 21 is, other than the fact you don't own half the land that you want to put a park on, we can overcome that. But there are some hard decisions, and costs aren't going down. They haven't, actually, they are starting to come down a little bit, but they haven't come down enough. And they probably won't. So you guys are going to have some decisions to make, and it won't make all the residents happy, but we'll help you get there.
Thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're on to item M. Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. This was brought up by Lumber Tross, related to term limits on, for commissions overall. Myself and Amy Venting decided to try to do some research for just for neighboring communities for what other communities are doing. Again, it's not the sole decision, but it does help with providing some context about what other communities do. Again, staff has no recommendation on this, we are just providing context, information. So we'll hand it back, I would say, to Councilman Tross, because he's the one who brought the item up, and go from there.
Yeah, so I, again, I have no, I don't think we have a problem right now, but I think it's one of those things that I think we should talk about and look at. I appreciate the work that staff did. I, I, looking at this, I, I like the way that Blaine did it, where they have a way where, you know, it's unanimous that the council wants to keep them on, then they stay on, and it's good to go beyond that. I don't know, I just think having ends to terms is not a bad thing, in my opinion. But I'm not like, gung ho, we got to do this, or gung ho, we don't. I just, I feel like we should have a discussion about it.
Why, why are you concerned that simply, I mean, when a term ends, we then can vote that new person in or, or not? Why is that not good enough?
I didn't say it wasn't good enough. I just think having a, a known churn date isn't a bad thing.
Yeah, so I wanted to have this discussion, and I don't have a, and I don't have a conclusion in mind. in mind, but I thought we should talk about it. To your question, Dennis, I, I think one example of this, because we, we have more, we struggle more on the other end of getting community members involved and willing to serve on the commissions versus people not willing to move on. What I, what I think we've experienced, though, is that because of that recruiting problem, I'll call it, we, someone's term expires and we have one application, and it's that person. So we really don't, we don't look around. We just sort of kick the can down the road on it. And so that, that's where I can, one example where I can see where a term limit would, would force us to, you know, keep a position open until we got some additional applicants. Has this been a big problem? No, I don't think so.
Well, so recently, we had that same issue with parks where we could have gotten a member re-upped and I think we, we pushed the posting out again by confusing that with the.
They didn't apply. Parks didn't, he didn't apply the first time around.
Right. So then we ended up with two applicants and we dumped the one and put in the other one. I personally, I think the problem is, is that when I talk to people in committee, they're not even aware, and I don't know where you place blame on this, advertising, I don't know, but they're not even aware there's an opening. So I, I don't know.
What could you do better in that?
I mean, it's.
And to me, that's a different discussion.
Do you think, there's also a status, and again, I don't have a personal, but do you think there's a status quo around like, oh, well, we know these five people are on there, so I don't need to apply because they'll just keep applying? Like, they're the ones that are always stepping up, so I don't need to step up? But if they're, they couldn't step up anymore, someone else might step up and take that role?
You could say that, I guess.
But I, I don't disagree. I think, I think the example you brought up, Mayor, is a good one at which, like, you know, we had to give it extra time and we got more applicants because of that. So I don't, I don't think that's a bad thing.
No.
I just have a hard time, like David said, when there's one applicant, it's the current one, and there's no other, no one else to choose from.
But the reality is, is that is the, the problem. And so what do you do then? If somebody's term limit's out and we had no replacement, you just leave it empty? I, I don't know. I, I just, I don't know.
Maybe the answer isn't this. Maybe the answer is we post for everything for three months instead of one month. Maybe that would help. I don't, again, I don't know what the, the answer is. I just, I think as our community grows, we've got more people that are, are willing to get involved. Maybe they don't know that they could get involved, but when I talk to people, they're like, oh, I wish I could get, well, there was an opening for two months, you know, no one applied for it.
Yes.
You know, and so, and we're going to appoint an EDA member tonight, or may, may not be appointing an EDA member tonight. And as part of that, you know, that was open for months and months and months, and it was, you know, took a while to get someone in there, so, to get someone to apply for it. So I, I don't know. I just.
It, it could very well be that that's an answer to get more applicants. Because like I said, there's, there's a lot of openings that I've seen over the years that people didn't even know about.
And fairness to staff, I mean, all of us sitting on Facebook, they're posted on Facebook, they, we talked about in the city council meetings, it's in the minutes.
It is, but a lot of people don't look at the minute minutes.
I don't disagree. I agree with you wholeheartedly on that.
Well, I guess, in, from my optics.
Any creative ways to advertise it? I think that would be helpful as well. I know.
Put a sign out front. It works for the fire department. It's just, it's a simple, like, it, it's something simple to try. We already have the means. What I'm hearing this conversation say is that we have an advertising issue. We, we simply put it on the website and we expect people to stumble across it. We don't actively pursue these things.
Yeah, I was going to add, last year at the open house, we did invite the commission, where we have it in previous years, and I think that is to get exposure to our commissions and so people can ask questions and know that.
Nothing related to the sign organs thing that we talked about earlier. I'm just saying signs work, because if it's on your way to work, you stop.
We just can't put them in the right order.
Exactly. I'm just saying.
When we do that event, we could have applicant, we have people pre-apply. So if they're at the event, yeah, when something comes up interested, to give us your information, then when the applicant, when it comes open, we pull those off the drawers, save enough more people, we reach out to them and say, are you still interested? Because that may be a way then to do it.
Absolutely, yep. I think everyone can apply at any time.
You've kind of done that in the past where there was an opening after the fact and you had these applicants. I don't remember what it was, my part, but you called them up and said, are you still interested?
Yeah. So we could do that by having people pre-apply for when the opening, because they come up every year on every commission. So.
Every two years, three years.
So.
On the website.
Except for two years, that's the only one that I don't know, but the others two are July.
I mean, you can.
Yeah, as far as like term limits, I guess we should just discuss, you know, you know, what benefit do we think that that would serve Dayton? And, and start there, I guess. I mean, maybe it's even asking, you know, some of these other ones that do have term limits, like, hey, why, why have you done that? You know, what's, do you have history? Do you have, are you pervy to anything that, you know, might benefit us? That's the conversation. I know I can do it, too, you know, but I think those are things like, I see this, you know, a huge list of no limit, so it's kind of like, well, I, I guess. But then I look at the names, I'm like, well, they're pretty well-built out already, except for, you know, a few, but, you know, does that mean something? Does it not? I don't know. I think, to your guys' point, it deserves a conversation. But I don't know if term limits is where we start, or if we're having advocacy issues that we should really hammer that one home first, is when we can get more than just one or two applicant for these openings. So my, my optics.
No, I agree. That's, you know, maybe a separate problem, but I, that is a real problem. And that's the one that we face every time an opening comes up, is getting, you know, a pool of applicants. And.
Well, I'd be fine, you know, finding better ways to do that.
Okay, then.
So I'm getting that we don't want to add term limits to commission members, is what I'm hearing. It sounds like we have more advertising problems.
Maybe not right now. Good discussion, thanks, Matt. I just think that, yeah, there's a different angle to approach this.
Totally fine. You have to do directions on, thank you.
On to action items, item N.
Just for the record, you guys said it all. I didn't need to add anything.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you were down there listening, at least, Scott.
That I have been passed, Scott. We're on the next item.
Go back to you.
Yeah, no, I looked at you and you had the, I'm done with this.
Should have never been there to be at, forever.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, so item N is an interviews permit for a home extended business to be located 13551 Norwood Lane. So a home extended business is essentially, it's a business that's in an accessory building. The applicants are proposing to locate a homeschool cooperative in the building. This is kind of, would be located on, here's the house here, would be located south of the house. City code allows up to 2,000 square feet for accessory building. The applicant's proposing about 1,500 square feet. With a home extended business, it does require a hundred-foot setback from neighboring homes. There's about 150-foot distance between the two homes, so there is space to fit the building. And then with any IUP for a home extended business, it does expire in five years. This was considered by the Planning Commission on August 1st. The commission did recommend approval for it. There were a number of residents that did have concerns about the, the use not being appropriate in the, this residential neighborhood. And staff is also recommending approval for this. I would say, generally, speaking within the applicant's description, there's, I think, a total of six families that would utilize this for, with a total of about 24 kids. For the building, it would need to meet or comply with building code and fire code. So as far as is the building large enough for 24 kids, that would be decided by the building code. So the IUP recommended conditions of approval does not address the maximum number of students, because that would be, staff's opinion is let the building code kind of dictate what that would be. And the applicants are here to answer any questions that council may have.
You're done with here?
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions for staff on this?
I've got one question here about this whole, this whole package. I, I don't have any problem with the, the homeschool deal. I would like the applicant to get in compliance with the garage ordinance more importantly than anything. That has laxed for, I guess, I don't really know how long.
So this would do that, right? I mean, this, the accessory building would take that non-compliance.
I would fix that, yep. Yep. I, I think, I think we as a council should be privy to, I understand there's been a communications with city attorney, Dennis, mayor, staff, and the applicants, and they've worked out some sort of an agreement on how to get to where we need to be.
Yep.
I think we should all be.
Was that the deal conversation that was brought during the planning commission? Yeah. I heard that, too. I have the same question.
I think we should be included in that conversation. And those kind of things, I mean, to me, it's five of us that decide things.
So I, I think what was kind of decided was, there was two problems. One was the connection between the house and the accessory unit in the house. And that, that, so that was an issue. There was also an issue with the fact that the garage no longer existed. I believe that was, those were the two issues. And, but, I mean, basically, that discussion for this property put a timeline on fixing those two things. That was really what it boiled down to.
And that timeline is?
That timeline is. Do you remember what the timeline is?
There was a plan, had to be discussed and approved by city council by October 31st, and then construction had to be done by July. I'm going to look at the applicant.
I think that's July next year.
July 2025. I believe that was sometime next summer, just to be realistic with time for building and stuff. But a plan had to be derived by, and approved by council. So as part of this, again, as during the discussion, it was mentioned to the applicant multiple times and within the individuals that were in the meeting, that nothing can be approved at all with the individuals that are in the meeting. It has to be approved by council. And so that was the plan that was derived, is that they'd have a plan in front of council by October 31st, which they are meeting that deadline far in advance, but that was correct. And then they have to be completed with construction by, I think it was June or July next year.
Did anything else discussed during that meeting?
Yeah, so there was another property that the applicant owns, had to become, had to come into code compliance, and they are, work through that process right now. And that was it. So that was general discussion with the applicant. Again, I think there was discussions that were had long, long ago that we're going to try to put behind us here of both sides being at fault in, in some way and somehow. And we're going to move forward with those things. That's the idea, is we're keeping moving forwards.
So just to clarify, there were no waived fees during that conversation?
Yep. There were waived fees to be able to justify things that had happened in the past by both sides.
Like $6,000 plus in fees, correct?
They weren't, those weren't fees.
Okay.
Those were related to the ordinance on zoning code violations and fines.
Okay. That's correct.
I think that discussion between the attorneys kind of kept us.
That is correct.
On a courtroom. So probably ended up saving.
Yeah, I think to Scott's point, though, I think there's five of us that should be making those decisions.
And the other, the other area where I have an issue in it, and I don't really, they don't need anything to have their school in their house. They don't need nothing for that. However, the house isn't up to snuff. So they're starting school here in like 10 days or something like that. September 9th, I believe, is the day. So my concern is that all of a sudden, we're going to go through this year of school and sure, maybe we get a plan by October 31st, but then all of a sudden, it ends up being August, September, October, and there's still no building. That's my biggest concern about this whole deal is, is the path to follow through with what you say you're going to do hasn't been followed through.
It is currently being followed through. It is currently being followed through, based on the plan that was discussed and approved by both sides.
No, I mean, the past, the past.
The past, okay, the past one, sure.
And I'll give everybody two, a second chance. So I guess my only concern is that we follow through with what we're going to say. That's about all I got. Nothing else.
There's people in the audience that may want to talk.
Yeah, once we're done, we'll, we'll deal with that.
How do you suppose they follow through with that plan? Like, is that the IUP process, that kind of?
Well, I mean, the building's going to have to be up to code. I mean, we don't have, we don't control that at all.
Yeah, that's a different.
I mean, that's a different, totally different deal. I mean, these guys get to figure that out. We had nothing involved in it. I mean, clearly, they can't get the building up anymore, wouldn't think, or I'd want the building up.
The force of will falls, that would imagine, right?
Yeah, right. I mean, if I could.
Time stand away.
There's a whole bunch of other things that have happened that that's why we're at this stage now. I get it. But anyway, that's where I am. And I, I hope we follow through where we're supposed to go.
So I add, because those people are going to come talk anyways, but I've heard from, I think, every neighboring property, either across the street or touching the property to this property, or talk to them, or both. I think the, we've had one, I've had one property that's, has no problem with it. So I think the shift of where the building is makes the most sense based upon that feedback. So that's my initial piece on, on that. I'll add that I think it's really important that in, in the past, maybe this property has been the most well-taken care of, and I think that irks some of the neighbors. And I got multiple messages and talked to people, and I, I could see why I drove down that road when it was in that condition. So I could see why. And so I would highly encourage the Yanceys to make sure that that doesn't happen again. I guess it'd be my, my biggest thing. I think that upset a lot of neighbors and that happened. And I have no problem with the school. Candidly, I have neighbors at homeschool. I think the only, the only difference between this and that is, is this seems like a, well, I happened to do some research, because I'd never heard of homeschooling co-ops. And one of them, from the Minnesota Association of Christian Home Educators, talks about how a homeschool co-op should not be, what they refer to as drop-in shop class situations. And I know my neighbors don't do that. To them, it's more of everyone getting together, socializing the kids, the parents are there, the kids are there. So I don't know if that's something maybe to, to consider as you move forward with this, but I think it is, I, I don't think it's an issue either way. So maybe my two cents.
Do we want the applicant to come up? You got something to say?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess the, you know, we're, we're kind of touching around the, the meeting that occurred with Dennis and myself and our attorney and the Yanceys and their attorney. And I think that was a good faith effort to try to come to some resolution, recognizing that there were, that things could have been done better all the way around. I guess I'll just summarize it at that. But the question that's in front of us today, and we couldn't have more people there because then it would be a quorum and then we're having a council meeting. Right? So, you know, right around that was the logic about why that happened that way. I don't know. I'm restricting my thoughts around this about the IUP. You know, it's not whether or not the Yanceys would be good neighbors or not, or what their history is with renters. We're also really not talking about the, the building, because that's a building code process. You know, with the zoning for that property dictates what kind of accessory building can go on it, how big it can be, how it's located. All of that gets worked out, bathrooms and anything else that may be required. Those things get worked out as part of the, the permitting process for the building itself. So I'm really just focusing on whether or not this is an acceptable use in that neighborhood. And that's the only question I have, that I'm trying to answer for tonight.
Okay. Do we have questions for the applicants?
One question I'd have for, um, how does, how does the fact that, to me, it seems a little odd that you would have-
This is the staff or the-
The staff, probably. I don't know that Nathan would know the answer. How is it that you could have a garage with whatever you have in a garage as part of the school?
Well, it's just where the extended business ends up.
It's a building code issue, and I can't even begin to address that. But it's a difference between the area of the building that's occupied by people versus occupied by staff.
And you can separate that, is what you're saying?
With a firewall, yeah. Or a fire rated wall.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
I don't even know that that's, I don't want to get into that conversation. Because with my wife's business, we went through this. And I, I'm, I think Sarah brought this up at the planning commission meeting. The difference between those two is kind of bonkers to me. You can put in your house, you're good to go. You don't need to get an IUP, you pay 60 bucks, it's done. You put it in the building next to your house and suddenly then we're-
It's different.
It's, it's like a whole different world. Yeah. But I agree with that. We're, we're here to talk about the IUP. And, uh, yeah, so...
I guess the question to staff is, you know, this use, what, what liabilities does the city see us being up against? I always pose the question, what's the worst thing that could happen with, with the IUP or, or this? You know, staff discussed, talked about, things of that nature, I guess, as far as-
In the worst case, if, whether the council says yes or no to it, or approves it, or denies it, or...
I don't think the city holds any liability. The property owner does.
I did. I get that.
You just wondered what could go wrong?
What, yeah, I guess what, what would be the city's liability, yes, in the sense that they, you know? I don't know. I just look at the optics like, you know, if it's used as a, as a shed, you know? I look, you do the math here a little bit. Maybe it's like 2% of the time it's got a school in it and the rest is probably used for storage, but I, I, I don't know. I don't know. It's what I heard at planning and what I'm doing now, it's just like-
Is this what if pigs had wings?
It may, maybe, maybe.
Frogs, frogs, frogs.
I don't know. I just, I just-
Do we have any applicant, or questions for the applicant, or not? Because otherwise, you can talk about residents. Have any questions coming up? No questions for the applicant?
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna allow comments from the public, but I would like them to be relevant. We're not talking about specifics about the accessory building. We can certainly include where it's at. And, uh, yeah, um, we'll put a three-minute limit on it. So if anybody does have any comments, they can come forward. Come on forward. State your name and address.
That would be Paula Irvin, 12465 137th Avenue, Dayton, Minnesota 55327. I'm really, so my first thing is, I am very, very surprised that the planning committee even okayed this. They didn't have a plan. They had nothing coming into this. My, my thought is they were coming, you were going, you were seeing this as going in blind. And now I come into this and this meeting, and you guys have okayed it. It's like everything's hunky-dory. Shame on you guys for letting everything occur that happened. It should never have happened. So I don't know the specifics of all of it, but not happy. So with that being said, obviously, I don't have any say on what's gonna happen in my neighborhood because everybody's gonna okay it. And how many people come to your neighbors and homeschool? I am like, just, I'm irritated.
They just have a gathering-
Do you have 25?
Twenty, just probably close to, yeah.
Okay.
We've had-
I have, I have the same thing, three doors, three doors down.
Okay.
Six, six or seven cars, the whole, the whole family's going in and it's not, it's more socialized than this homeschooling. It's, in my mind, in this situation, it's no different than me having a bunch of friends over and the kids playing. Because that's really what's going on.
And then the other thing is, there's a, a gully that separates their yard from my yard. I don't want to see any kids in that gully, even close to it. Because I'm concerned with kids getting stuck in the mud or whatever. And I don't want to be liable for one of their kids or school kids ending up.
Just for clarity, can you, can you provide which, which one is yours? I, I didn't get an address or, I guess I didn't hear it. Are you on the north side?
Or are you just north?
I'm 137th, so-
You're up one more.
One more left.
No.
Nope.
Nope, left. Go left.
No, too far.
She's the, she's the property north of the, of the resident property.
Right there.
Right there.
Immediately north.
The next, okay.
So there's a, what you're saying is there's a, there's a gully in your yard?
There's a gully.
In your yard?
Then part of my yard and in-
It is. That's the sewer line.
The sewer line.
It's a utility spot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The sewer. Most of it's in my yard. It just kind of angles out. But right now, it's a rainy year. It's-
Saturated?
Very, very saturated.
It's a risky situation.
Yeah. And you won't get a lawnmower down there or anything. So since I don't have, nobody cares about my opinions, obviously. I'm sorry.
It's not that we ca, it's not that we're saying that.
Yeah.
It's that he is obligated to build a garage.
I understand that.
As far as the homeschool thing, he doesn't even need to come to us for that.
All right. So my concern then for you is the gully. And if you're gonna be having 25 kids running around. So I don't know if there's-
We probably have a lot of areas in the city. I mean, behind my house is a pond. And I can't tell you how many, you know, times we brought the kids back there from these groups. The neighbors also bring the kids back. There's been boats on there. So you don't have that risk, especially where there's water. It tends to attract kids.
Kids, correct.
And if they start seeing kids, then it really starts to attract them. I understand that.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I was gonna say, just to put it into like somewhat perspective, like, um, down by my house, I have the disc golf course. And I talked to the neighbors that are on there. And, you know, just the other day, the parking lot was full. Had to have been at least, you know, 20, 25 some odd people there too. So the concerns, I feel like that would emulate there, could emulate here too. But, you know, again, comes back to the point of like, do it at the city, then why can't we let somebody else do it too? That's why I feel like the ordinance isn't at, like, down to that kind of finite detail. So I mean, that's just a perspective point. That's just one of those things that crossed my mind as, as this packet was put together and I was thinking about this. So that's, the, the noise that could generate from that disc golf course could easily be generated here as well. So-
And I do realize, you know, there's the noise and everything. But when we moved in here, we knew there was a school there. We didn't foresee a co-op opening up in the neighborhood.
I didn't either, but we are, yeah.
I didn't anticipate 11 houses up against my property, but-
I just, I don't understand that in the neighborhood because they're usually not in neighborhoods. They're usually in churches and they're usually, and, and we're talking co-ops not getting together with your other families and everything, you know? And things like that. So-
I don't know that I'd get too hung up on the name. They didn't have to call it a co-op. They could, they could just say it's Nathan's homeschool, you know? I mean, I don't know that I'd get hung up too much on the co-op part. To me, that doesn't really add any flair in it.
Let me just put it this way, gentlemen. I'm gonna be retiring and I'm getting old. All right?
It's your neighborhood.
I don't like little kids.
I appreciate you coming up though.
I love my granddaughter, but I am-
You can give back, right?
You got about this much time.
Well, thank you for coming up.
Full of Jolly Ranchers and Mountain Dew. Here you go. Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
That's it?
Do you have anybody online that-
Um, so if anyone online wanted to speak on this topic, they can use the raise of your hand function. Um, so I do have someone who wants to talk.
Okay.
Um, so for the record, you will need to state your name and address. I don't know.
Okay.
You're being asked to be unmuted. Can you please unmute yourself?
Okay. Well, okay, so, um, I think I've speeded my only concerns.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I want to add a comment, just for the public side of it, I guess. As far as the plan or idea that what they're doing, that's all gonna come before the engineers and, and John. The building itself will have to be approved by them and we'll get to see it again. But they're gonna have to meet whatever criteria they gotta do for the building, so.
And just to add a clarity, so with an interim use permit, this is another way to look at it. It's a permitted use with conditions. And so the intent of the conditions is to try to mitigate any nuisance factors that might occur with whatever that uses. So in this case, and it's gonna be different for every IUP. So in this case, the nuisance is whatever you can imagine that 24, 25 kids might create. It'd be different if this were a home business with lawn care or something else. So it's different for every case.
Automotive, generating noise out of the, out of the unit, yeah, things of that nature.
Okay. All right.
Want to add another comment?
Sure, come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
Name and address?
Jamie Wizniewski, 13600 Norwood Lane North. I am across from the red splotch. Um, I know with the planning commission, we tried to put a number at that meeting, a number on the children. And we keep going with 25, but I don't think that's ever been set. With this condition or this permit, is there a number? Could it go, we're all thinking 25, and now there's 100?
Um, so the staff's recommendation is that it would be set by, or the building code would be allowed. So the, the building, as far as I know of, hasn't been designed yet. So it's gonna vary depending on how much space is allocated for the school.
The occupancy is dependent upon the square footage of the actual building, right? Maximum occupancy in, inside that footprint?
Because, you know, homeschooling is pretty darn popular now. I, I would do it if I had a young child, honestly. So as more children are born and how long this goes, I see that number possibly growing. I don't know, Nathan and Megan, if you have any idea, like, numbers or not. I don't think it was set.
They're not trying to grow big.
Yeah, we definitely won't have 100 kids.
I meant to say small.
25 is-
Intimate.
Okay. I just didn't think that we had a number set on it. I was just curious.
So they're not on mic, but, you know, what they're saying is they don't plan on growing it.
Growing.
And I think that became clear at the planning commission meeting. And I, I thought I had, maybe it was the planning commission numbers that I'm thinking of. But you're saying now it's just the limit is that, well, the building code allows.
Yes, correct.
That's currently the limit. I mean, we could settle it, but I mean-
You could. I mean, there's, realistically, there's no way to enforce that if it's 25 kids and they have 26. We're not gonna-
Yeah, that would be my concern. Okay.
And then is there-
Say that again? I, I missed that. I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but literally, I missed that.
Okay.
I, I missed this conversation.
I'm sorry. So I, I think Dennis was, it was clarifying that they're not playing on, the Yanceys aren't playing on growing far more, larger than what you're having in your application. So once again, it's 20, 25?
I mean, the number's fluid. We had-
But it's six-
It's gonna probably be less than that. We had three or four families drop out just five days ago. So the number's fluid. I, we, 25 would be the max we might do.
Okay.
Sorry, so the applicant is not on the mic, so I wanna make sure that everyone hears it on the mic. The applicant mentioned that 25 would be probably the max. I know that they mentioned in their application possibly 30, but again, we're, it's a fluid number. It can vary a little bit, but-
It, it does depend on if, if we're talking about 25 non-Yanceys or including a Yancey.
Sure. I think what we're trying to do at staff level is just say whatever the occupant load is of the building that they're gonna put together is. That's what we're gonna utilize. So we have something to back on with the building codes.
And so- How we make it work.
Correct, exactly.
So the building's going to be 40?
Depending on the size of the, so the, based on the accessory building size, it's a danger question.
And is there a set hours of operation that we will be aware of as neighbors? Like three days a week, eight to 10 or something? Well, is that anything that'll be privy to us and that this license will limit the time?
I believe in-
In their letter to us, to the city and the IUP, it says it's Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., right? And this, it says we have approximately 20 students between ages of seven and 14. Two licensed teachers and parents of the students who serve as independent contractors.
Okay. So if it expands from that, would they have to come and get, ask for a change? Just don't know how it works.
Sure. So there's no condition that limits the days and hours of operation? The, the city code does limit it, but that's, um, 10:00 p.m. So-
10:00 p.m.
10:00 p.m.
Right.
So it'd be similar if, if someone were to operate a home business, you know, anywhere else. They have a limit of, of working there till 10:00 p.m.
So we could have homeschool dances up to 10:00 p.m.?
I hope you get invited.
Right, I know.
As long as you're compliant with the noise ordinances.
So, yeah, so that's, with the, with the IUP that's in front of the council currently, I do not believe there's any-
No.
-requirements for those.
And the-
The council can add restrictions on the IUP if they'd like to.
We should just have, we should have the Yanceys up and talking about it and see.
Yep, we should do it.
It's up to the council. That's the question is, the council can make requirements on the IUP that would be more restrictive than current code. But that, essentially, if they don't have anything in there, it goes by current code. So that would be 10:00 p.m. or, I don't know when it starts, but-
Yeah, so 7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
7:00 a.m.?
Yes.
That, that's based on current code.
All right.
That's, yeah, any extended business can-
Mm-hmm, correct.
I think I've, I've expressed my opinion to all of you in the past, so I don't need to go into it now. And thank you.
I appreciate the conversation.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so are we looking at putting restrictions for hours? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm gonna erase some stuff.
Maybe the Yanceys have a problem with it.
I think we do that now.
We could, we could just get some things hashed out real quick.
Yep.
There is-
So you do have one online that's one system.
Okay.
Okay.
Not saying you have to take them.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, so Hutner, um, if you can unmute yourself and can I get your name and address, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, Hutner, Chair Dayton EDA, 13531 Balsam Lane. Maybe I missed it. This is a home-based business. Will it be filing for a 503(c) or how does this tax go with a school? I mean, are they gonna be applying for state grants? How does this affect our tax vote?
Are you asking if there would be a tax exempt?
That too.
No. Well, I, I guess I won't answer that. That would be an even question, but I find it hard to believe they could.
Yeah.
But it's just based on number of hours.
I think that's our jurisdiction that I'm aware of in cities and-
Yeah, I would add typically with a home business and accessory building, we would notify Hennepin County of that change or that change in the use of the building. It'd be up to the county to decide how they're going to assess that, if it's going to be any different for a home-based school versus a, a different commercial operation.
Yeah.
No different than we do any other business.
Right.
Can I answer your question?
Tim? Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes, it does. It, um, I would just concern that it would be a, a wash through later. And in their permitting fees, do, who would be inspecting this school to make sure they're in compliance?
It's no different than any other IUP. I think we are, I don't know that we always check compliance. We are, is this-
For a new building, it would be Metro West is our-
No, the building, but the IUP.
Oh.
We would verify with inspection typically, once the operation's up and running. Or if they're already up and running, then we would verify with an outside inspection typically. Let's, John, please, outside inspection, just to make sure that they're following the IUP to begin with.
Per the IUP requirements. Did you catch that, Tim?
I, I heard everybody's talking at the same time.
So basically, it would be, um, do we do that yearly? So the IUP is verified-
The intention is to do that yearly. We, we've not been able to in the past.
So essentially, it's complaint-based?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. So it'd be like all the other IUPs we have, that they're expected to comply. And if there's a complaint filed, we will investigate. The city will check it out.
But we have some vulnerable citizens here, especially if they're children. And how does a children complain, or does it the parent, or, I mean, there's gotta be some mechanism in place here that says, with these vulnerable people.
Well, it's an IUP, so we would make sure they were in compliance with the IUP requirements.
Understood. Thank you.
Do we have more?
No, well, thank you. We're good.
Okay. Okay, um, Nathan, you wanna come on up? Sounds like we have some questions. Name and address?
Nathan and Megan, 13551 Norwood Lane.
Based on the feedback, do you have any issues limiting how late it goes into the day?
Uh, I do. I think that, um, I think for us, we, we struggle with this, the process of this whole process in general because, um, we are talking-
because, um, we are talking about 90% of the people are friends or in family of ours. And, uh, we see it as a community of people that we get together, we spend time together. We spend time with these families outside of the school hours themselves. And I think that we're setting ourselves up for, um, some issues if, let's say, 2 o'clock runs around, or 3 PM rolls around, and some of these families are staying to hang out with us. I think, and then we have neighbors, you know, reporting us, and I, I just think that, um, we, we're, we're crossing a really scary line as a city by trying to, uh, regulate a little too much on what people do on their own properties and the freedom that they have to spend time with the people that they want to spend time with. Um, so, yeah, I do, I do have some concerns with, with doing that. I, I, 10 PM, I totally understand that, that makes, that makes total sense. Um, so, you know, we have no issues with that, but I think, uh, um, we, we would have some issues with, uh, with the time restriction, just because it, it could be setting us up for failure, and, yeah.
What days of the week?
So the school, the co-op, um, and I, I'm saying school because I keep hearing school, we have to be very careful, it's not a school. Um, so, um, i- if it were a school, it would be, it would be significantly different guidelines from the Minnesota Department of Education. Um, it is a co-op, we're all registered homeschool families. Um, so it's Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 9 AM to 1 PM. Uh, families will drop off between 8:50 AM and, and 9 AM, and then they pick up promptly at 1 PM. Um, there were some concerns expressed from the neighbors, um, at the planning commission about traffic. Um, we are talking about, about five additional cars, um, based on the number of kids in each family that would be coming into the neighborhood. Um, so we did, uh, design a plan where they would come from South Diamond Lake Road, and they would enter Norwood Lane from South Diamond Lake Road, and then they would go back out on South Diamond Lake Road. So that eliminates any additional traffic on 137th, and then any properties north of Norwood Lane from our property. Um, so that, that eliminates that, that issue there.
This is a suggestion to your users, right? I mean, it's a public road, I mean, they can...
Right, yeah, they can, I mean, they certainly can, but, you know...
Thank you for doing the due diligence, but I mean, can we enforce that? No, not really. So, um, carpooling, I mean, there's, reduce it that way.
Anybody else have questions for the applicant?
I don't think so.
I know we're not getting into it, but Scott did, uh, mention something that I just, I did want to address. He mentioned, um, not complying, and I think that, um, there's been a narrative surrounding our family about not being in compliance or doing unpermitted things.
Yeah, let's...
And I just, I know we don't want to get into it, but I just feel like I need to stay for the record, since he did bring it up, is, um, I would, I, I would be happy to have a conversation with you about that, and I would look into the facts surrounding it. Um, there are documented facts, but that is untrue, so that's all I'm saying about that.
I'm talking about the, uh, the living quarters in the current home.
It was all permitted and approved, so, yeah.
All right, so, uh, so any other questions about this IUP to the applicant? All right, so we need...
So I want to clarify, we're not, I just want to make sure we're clear with the IUP requirements, is that you're not adding one for dates or times or anything? Okay, so I want to make sure, no difference of records, it was brought up and then...
That's part of the motion, you mean?
That would be with the motion, yeah.
Yeah, I've got it written down, I mean, yeah. I mean, to me, to me, you're saying, you're, you're telling us 9 to 1. If we give you a couple hours on, on the backside of it, I mean, I don't think it's any big deal. In my opinion, if your neighbor complains that you have two families that want to stick around for hot dogs after, after 3 o'clock, tell them to go fly a kite.
The problem is, it's like the science, it's, it's like, it's like the science. It will be unintelligible.
I think this one's unique, if it was a normal business, it'd be a little more black and white, but I think knowing that this is part of a... I'm struggling, Scott, honestly, because I, I was, I was hoping you come up and say, yeah, we, you know, we won't be doing school past 7 PM, so it's not a big deal, and then we're okay with that. So, so that's what I was hoping you'd go up and say, because I don't, I could see the grayness in what, exactly what you're saying, which is, these are people we hang out with all the time, these three days a week, they're gonna be around more often, that's why they're here. They might hang out later, we don't want to get nuisance calls because all of a sudden neighbors aren't happy this is going in or whatever, and so they're, they're trying to, to pick it apart, and so I can completely see that, and so, yeah, that's where I'm at, I don't... I was hoping you'd self-regulate so that we wouldn't have to worry about it, but I, I can see the gray area in that.
I mean, you're, you're right in the sense that it is, I think it would be more, you know, kind of a self-regulated piece. I mean, you have to be good stewards to your neighborhood, and, I mean, I, I mean, I, I want to be. And when I, you know, I go home, I represent the fire department and, you know, other facets, I wear many hats for the city, and, you know, I don't want to, you know, put a bad image out there myself either, but, you know, I still care about my neighbors and, and what, you know, they, they see the neighborhood shaping into, but, you know, does that drive a lot of things? I don't know, I just think there's something about being a servant leader and, and looking at things and being a good steward through that lens. I think you have the capacity to do that, you both do.
But for people that don't, we do have city ordinance.
A hundred percent.
Cork at it, yeah.
Yep.
Now, I can be a lot of my neighbors, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
They sometimes go past that.
And I think that's part of being the good steward, that you, you would know that, hey, you know, I think it's quiet time in the neighborhood, we should start quieting it down, you know, whatever the case may be, but, yeah, I mean...
I just want to mention, I feel, our, our hours are super intentional for 9 to 1, because we don't, we want, we really value learning through living, so we are not trying to do school. You know, it's 12 hours a week for a very specific reason, that's how we view education in life. So we don't plan on extending hours and doing all these things. I, we just are stating that to put restrictions on just living life, um, because we also have, you know, friends that are over or something, and like you said, you probably will get complaints because...
And they could even be those members of your co-op, and now you got a car sitting there for beyond the hours, and, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's not black and white.
Like Scott says, it's clear as mud.
I think the example you gave, you know, is a great example of where confusion could come in about, well, it's past 3 o'clock, and we turned off the open sign, and why are, why is there still people running around in the area? Uh, you know, it's, how do you just, where's the distinction between, you know, friends and, and business associates in this context? And I don't think we can, and I think that the, you know, the 10 PM restriction is there for everybody, and I think that that's the best we can do here.
And also, all these other families have very busy and full lives, so usually, on most cases, they're ready to go on about this.
The reason we're doing this school option is because we don't want longer days for school.
Yeah, we're, we're usually ready to be done.
So it's three days a week and 12 hours for the week, yeah, so...
Okay.
Do, do we have any objection in my motion, I have a limit of 30 students? If two years you, from now, you come back and say, hey, we need 35, I want you to come back and say that.
Right, we would, that's not our desire.
All right, so we're good then? Okay?
All right, okay, are you, okay.
I'm gonna make the motion. Now, we approve this with a limit of 30 students, and I'll go along with you guys on the hours of operation.
Okay, so you just want, I'm in the IUP to add a requirement of a maximum of 30 students? I need a second.
I think for clarity, does that include the residents that live on the property or not? Me and the Yancees children?
That's total students.
Those are students.
Okay, perfect, just want to make sure we're all on the same page, there's no confusion.
I took 30 students to be both additional families and your own.
Yep, that's students, period.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries 5 to 0. Okay.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, and regarding the, the discussion, um, with the lawyers, that is gonna come back to council, so it is gonna be voted on. Uh, and we can explain more details there. Um, and we made it very clear during that meeting that we would, couldn't agree to anything that the five didn't vote on, so...
Was that meeting recorded?
Uh, I don't do, so probably not. No, but all the conditions will come, will be voted on by, by the council.
From that meeting?
From that meeting. Okay, item O.
Item O, this is an interim use permit for an event center for Magnus Veterans Foundation located at 16861 North Diamond Lake Road. Um, is, the council may be aware, so the council previously approved an interim use permit for Veterans Foundation in 2021. Uh, so Magnus is, their main focus is on assisting or providing outpatient care to veterans and the family. Um, it's a nonprofit organization, so they're dependent on donations. Um, what they're asking for is an interim use permit for an event center that would be used to host fundraisers, essentially. Um, the event center would be located, well, I'm gonna say that event center activities would generally be located in, I'm gonna call, refer to it as the backyard that's between the main house and the main structure and the, uh, the pond here. Um, the parking for the event center would occur in this grassy field. Uh, staff estimates that there's roughly space for 500 to 600 cars. If you want to note that it would be on a grass field, whereas the ordinance requires an improved parking area. Um, this is the third event center that will have, uh, Fisher Farms, which is located across the road, does have an improved surface. And, uh, Deans Pumpkins does not, or has a grass surface. Again, uh, the access would be off of not, uh, North Diamond Lake Road, on a gravel surface. Uh, with an inter, with a, the event center, we do require that the applicant submit an emergency management plan, so how they would handle any, uh, type of emergency as far as how to get people out, and how to keep paths clear to keep, to get, uh, allow emergency vehicles and personnel into the property.
Now, was that, that plan, is that just once for the IUP? It, it, the wording almost made it sound like every event.
No, so the intention is it's one plan that foresees every possible emergency that you, this is the intent, any possible emergency, whether it's a thunderstorms, fire, and so on.
Yeah, I'm more curious, it only really matters, but in the past, have you gotten events they parked down by the lake? Is that no longer where they're gonna be parking it? Because I believe in the past, with the place that you're talking about, it's been like overflow parking, but majority of the parking was down by the lake, and it is the events I went to, so is that changing or not?
I would have to have the applicant to...
Okay, then I'll wait, thank you. I'm just more curious.
Go ahead.
I'm done.
You're done? Any questions for staff? You want to, uh, come on forward and, uh, name and address?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bob Juskowiak, I'm a director and officer and donor and volunteer at Magnus Veterans Foundation, 16861 North Diamond Lake Road.
So that question is, are you guys basically moving your parking to that?
Yes, sir, we anticipate parking on the, on the west lot. We now have a gate installed that's locked there, so there's no access to that except during an event. It's possible that some staff or, for instance, the Dayton police have been present at events, they might park along the road, along the east side, employees or staff, but public would park in, in the area to the west.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for applicant?
That, um, that access, I understand that's event use only, and maybe this is a question more for, for Jason, but the, the county allows that? Does the county allow that? I'll make it a question.
I don't know if this went through the permitting process, but, um, if it does go through the permitting process, they will allow a connection. If they find it...
Do you want to clarify, I do, I did confirm with the county, they did, they did approve this.
Okay, I, I wasn't involved in it.
I, I was not either, I just had to ask the question, I don't know, a year ago.
Yeah, so this property has three driveways, which is a little unusual, um, but, uh, you know, the event center is going to be seldomly used, so it's not a daily, it's kind of like a field access. Um, there's, I'm gonna refer to as what appears to be the main access that goes to the house, there's limited parking. Uh, the majority of, I believe, employees and, um, members will be parking, or, no, will be accessing, uh, the eastern driveway.
And I know in all fairness, you had emailed us all and invited us out to come out, and so I've taken you up on that, and I thank you for that. But you had mentioned when you were there that you guys are slowly kind of getting away from a large number of, of fundraising events? I mean, you still do some, but not like maybe in past years, that was, has that changed at all since you and I talked, or no?
No, it has not. We, we have found that these large events on our property are volunteer-intensive, and the, the purpose is partly to introduce the public to our services that we offer there, but it's principally for fundraising, if we, we realize that our fundraising is elsewhere. We just, we can't survive fundraising by having events on our property. So this year, there will be two, not counting a very small trunk retreat, next year, there could only be one. We are, we're a wellness center providing services to veterans, not a Fisher Farms or a Deans.
That's not the main scope of your practice? I don't really know if it's business continuity plan, whatever you want to call it, right?
It is not.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Your motion is second.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Uh, sure. Sarah Van Aston, 16100 South Diamond Lake Road, I live a mile and, well, less than a mile and a half from Magnus, um, and I'm on the planning commission, and I just a question for clar, uh, clarification. Um, in the applicant, or the application we saw, there was mention of the two events that happened in August and September are going past the 8 PM cutoff for amplified outdoor music. Um, and so what I am asking you guys to clarify is when you are approving this, is it as the ordinance states that the cutoff for outdoor amplified music is 8 PM, even though the events they've run so far, which are going through the different process of the special events ordinance, which is a completely different process, but they've had a later, they go 10:30-ish for the outdoor amplified music? So I'm just wanting to clarify what you guys are actually approving.
Good question. Um, so just for clarity, so in the event center ordinance, and I'm just gonna read this, the hours of operation shall be no later than 9 AM to 10 PM on Sunday through Thursday, and 9 AM to 11 PM on Friday and Saturday.
I'm asking about the amplified, outdoor amplified music.
However, in item F, it says no sound-up amplification systems may be used outdoors after 8 PM. So as it currently sits with your motion and your second, if you're currently on the floor, it would be as the section says, which would be not past 8 PM.
It's gonna, it's gonna be past 8 PM.
Yes, Bob Juskowiak, again, we did ask for an area that amplified music killed 10 PM.
For, uh, both events?
Well, there's only one more.
I mean, did you ask for that?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's not in the IUP, correct?
Uh, correct.
So, and, and this is based on a, a large assembly application? Or what, what was the mechanism of the request?
I think it was.
Oh, yeah, because they are not in that survey yet.
Right, so they, they submitted an application.
For the last one, they submitted an application.
Yeah, and we approved that. Now, I think to Sarah's point, had, going forward, I think this question's come up before also, he's like, these, um, these centers, I, I don't know if, and it, they're gonna have, they're gonna occasionally have, um, things that, that they may want, want, uh, to run late. I don't know how, what mechanism we would use to deal with those.
It would be easier if you, you know, if you just set a, a time on it that applied to every event.
Um, it would be easiest if you applied some sort of recommendation in the IUP.
Yes.
That's what John's saying.
It's only amplified noise that's cut off at 8, right? So after 8, events can still happen, they can have acoustic guitar there, no big deal, they just can't have amplified.
Not amplified.
Not amplified.
Right.
It would be non-amplified.
Campfire, campfire fire.
So what would the process look like? Are you, I'm, I'm sort of reluctant to build it into this event center that they can have hours different than the other two event centers that we've approved. Uh, so what does the process look like if, if you've got an event where... So what does the process look like if you've got an event where that's, that's something you'd really like to do? What, what is the process for asking for approval for, to run later?
And something that probably flows into that is, is if we're talking about one or two events a year versus every weekend. I mean, I can, I have no problem with an occasional event dipping into at 10 o'clock for.
Yeah, this is going to be no different than.
In fairness, you don't live right next door.
It's going to be no different. I mean, he's asking for 10 o'clock, correct?
Yes, sir, that's.
So, I mean, it's no different for, for this event than it would be for party in the park, or concert at the park, or whatever you want to call it.
So as part of the IUP, if you approve a 10:00 PM amplified music adjustment to the ordinance, you would be saying at any time, any time they want to have an event, you would pass 10:00 PM on the ordinance, because the IUP would be granting it for the property itself, which is what I think your concern is, goes over fashion, is that if you approve it in the IUP as part of a, what do you want to call it? A deviation from the code, you're then allowing it at any time, whether it's one event or two events, or whatever it is, you allow it at any time. Correct?
Yes. Yeah, I just want to know that there is a process for that request, because you're talking about one or two events a year, you know.
It would be.
How would that come to us for approval? I guess that's.
So I say everything was said and done, and they want to have an event that's going to, that's going to have amplified music past eight. How would they request that in the future? Any act, any?
The most appropriate way would be to amend the IUP. Now, realistically, it would be coming back and saying, you know, do I have permission to go until 10 o'clock? The council would say yes, and we're just not compliant with the IUP. So it would be more, I guess my recommendation would be to set the time limit with the IUP as one of the conditions.
Well, my problem with that is, is that would we be setting it in compliance with the rest of the, would we be setting it to eight and then allowing exceptions, or, I mean, so let's say we've seen this come up, construction, there's something going on, and they want to run late. They will come to us and say.
So that, that would be how you'd have to do it. Essentially, you have to approve a variance if you wanted to have, if you set it to the .
To that event, right?
You'd have to have, come in and request a variance for, hey, we're running an event at this time, can we go till 10? You'd have to then grant that variance individually, no different than you would be.
It does seem like a pain for one or two events. My concern would be is.
That's, yeah, so you're going to have, Bob, and you're, maybe he doesn't have that many events, so he's going to go.
And it isn't necessarily specific to Magnus. It's, I mean, we have a few of these now.
Moving forward, right?
And they could be, you know, running things late. I don't know how we handle exceptions.
Exceptions are handled by the council, so it's like a basically a variance request, which is time consuming, I don't disagree, but that's the only.
That's really the only mechanism.
And I want to say, it's not a lane use variance, so I mean, there's a whole set of criteria.
Bad choice of words.
I will say, not a variance.
An exception.
An exception, yeah.
Has to be approved by council individually. Unfortunately, that's the only way to do it.
Okay.
If I may.
Makes sense.
We have an event planned for September 7th.
I was going to say, so there's probably an exception one I very quickly hear.
That's already approved, though.
Yeah, that's approved, whether there are.
Oh, that's true. That was on the application.
That was on the last meeting.
Do you approve that or should the event take place?
At the last meeting.
Okay. I think we're good then.
So the motion stands?
Good as is.
Motion would be as is.
Eight PM.
Eight PM is standing.
For amplified music.
If the applicant would like to go past 8:00, they need to come in and ask for an exception to their.
In the future.
Or you can request it right now, and the council can consider that now.
Well, no, it sounds good for this event.
That event is already okayed.
Yeah.
For future events.
For any future one.
Yeah. I don't have a future one right now, so.
We don't, but that was our intent when coming before here, was to get one permit that governs our operations going forward, so we don't have to approach the staff every single time. We're willing to do that.
It would not cost you any dollars to do that, if that's what your question is.
It would not.
That's, I'm telling you that it would not cost you any dollars to ask for an exception.
It's not a formal process.
But it's still something that would show up on the council meeting.
You would have to do that if you wanted to have past 8:00.
Whether you consent or go through action, whatever the case may be, it's, okay. That's the transparency piece of it.
Correct.
Got it.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Need a motion and a second?
We have a motion.
You already got it.
Oh, yep, I do. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Curious, five to zero. We are on to item P.
Good evening, members of the mayor and members of council. We have not re, we have rehashed the special event thing already. I wanted to make sure that the update was noted in there, that after we re-watched the meeting last time, there was a failed motion, but not a passed motion.
It doesn't have to be a passed motion.
Yeah, so I'd like to just make sure, clarify for the record, that we have a passed motion of denial.
Okay, so, so this really confused me. There's, a motion to not do something is typically out of order. Motions are affirmative.
Sure.
They mean you're going to do something.
Sure.
And this motion said, we're not going to do something. So that's what I'm confused about. Where's the state statute coming in?
What do you mean? So we did not have a motion to deny it. We had a motion to.
That's because denying it is doing nothing.
We had a motion to amend the special event ordinance.
And it failed.
And it failed. We didn't have a successful motion.
You don't have to have a successful motion.
Then it doesn't ever pass. That's what I'm confused.
Yeah, but there's nothing to pass, it failed.
Haven't we negatively voted things down in the past?
If we did, it was out of order.
I say, because we, I remember, remember the fun conversation we had about voting no against a yes, and yes against a no, I remember physically remember doing it.
I mean, we, we can do this, but, I mean, I even talked to the league about this today. There is no motion to not do something.
Sure, I just.
If you, if that would, if it's itching at you, we can do this, but.
Yeah, it just, and the reason why is because it was passed with a motion of an amended the motion, so I don't know if the original motion would have, that's why I'm a little confused, and I'm just trying to make sure. I understand the intent of the council, I think I got that with a 3-2 vote of denying it, but I just wanted to make sure it's clear that, you know, that was with an amendment to the special event ordinance. There was, there could have been another motion that says, I'll take it as is.
There could have been, but nobody made that motion.
Correct, it was just kind of mute point at that point, and that's why. It's intended by, I believe it was intended to deny it. I would prefer just to have a denial of the motion, and then we're just done with it, and that's, that's all, that's what I'm looking for.
All right. So.
Which staff is fine with, but we just, I just would like to have it for the record.
All right, so we need, let me get to it then. We'll need a motion to deny.
To deny. I'll make a motion to deny.
All right, so Scott, okay. Just don't tell me we're getting, getting into a discussion here, but any discussion? All right, all those in favor of denying, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, that passes.
Correct. That's all I'm looking for.
Thank you very much.
That's what we tried to do two weeks ago, right?
Correct, exactly. The general intention was that, but I just.
I get it, but I, I've never seen one of those before, and that's why I talked to the league, and they're like, huh? Okay. So, item Q. I almost, I almost overturned this there.
You being mayor and council, Central Park is located in the northeast part of town, actually right behind City Hall here. On it is a gravel parking lot, as shown on the location on the screen that's highlighted. It's between City Hall and Dayton Elementary. This area is used for park users, as well as the drop off and pickup for school when they're in session.
That is a, no, go back. I just wanted to note the picture of Central Park at its peak, go back one more. Forward, there you go. So that is just, we just wanted to note by city staff of how many cars are actually on that, is how full the parking lot is.
That's at least three days a week.
Correct. I mean, that's, at peak times of use, that's what it looks like.
Well, and that's between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00 PM, too.
You got it.
Yeah, because there's cars that shift in and out of there for the sports events and whatever else, yeah.
Staff was there, we said, okay.
The parking lot is downstairs.
Yeah.
Somewhere.
In the sea of color.
It's still going to look like that.
Yeah, it's still. Well, you know what, though? The lines will help, because.
The reason for that is because we believe as staff that it will help with parking, is will you get more of those cars actually on the parking lot?
You will, but you may also get more cars.
So I count 83 spots plus the five handicap spots, which I assume are required for the number of parking spaces there. There's no way there's 88 cars in that lower space on the gravel.
That are using it today?
Correct, as it's used today.
That's our, because the organized layout with the striping will just help more efficiently use the space.
On a un-stripe gravel lot, if somebody parked that close to me, I'd probably bust them out.
We need to.
Yeah, we're not stripping Costco lines, the double.
Okay.
So as council is aware, on the July 9th meeting, we discussed improvements of this lot. Council did direct staff to put together some improvements and go seek contractor pricing for the construction of the improvements. We did look at, or we did do a design for improvements. It consisted generally of improving the drainage of the area, doing concrete curbing in a ribbon style, so it's just a flat concrete border around the parking lot to stay compliant with city code, paving the surface of both the parking area and the access from South Diamond Lake Road, and then again, the striping or the pavement markings to help organize the lot, if you will, for parking use. And we were under, or we were anticipated to be under the $175,000 threshold that would trigger public bidding, so we did go out for construction invitational quotes with contractors. So here's just a quick look at the improvements, what it looks like. I tried to highlight the edge of the existing, I don't know if that shows up real well on there, but the existing gravel edge. We tried to just mimic the footprint, just to, to control costs at this time. The parking lot could be expanded in the future if needed. We did lay out a couple of concepts of potential future expansions that could be done if needed, but we tried to match what was there, and as was mentioned, this is 83 stalls with the five accessible up in the northeast corner of the lot. We solicited six contractors that do this type of work often. Four of them did submit quotes for the work, as shown, low bid came in at just a hair under $164,000, so that compares to our estimate. We had it, we were right at that threshold of the 175. We were, I don't even know if we were a full thousand under it. We came right in, so we, we hoped we'd get some favorable bids, which we did, that were under the threshold, so. Just the overall project cost, the $164,000 bid, we do have a $34,000 engineering effort estimated for the project, and then there had a couple thousand in there just for review of the contracts, attorney fees, or anything else that might be an expense with it, expense with the project, bringing the estimated total, the $200,000 for the project. Funding for this project, as has been discussed, would be the pavement management fund. So if council wishes to move forward with this project, we recommend that the contract be awarded to the low bidder, which is OMG Midwest. I should also mention, I don't think I have this in your packet either, we have talked with the school. They are comfortable relocating their drop off and pickup during the construction, so that's all being coordinated. They're going to move it back to the, I guess it'd be the east side of the school during the construction, and we've given PD a heads up that there might be traffic out onto South Diamond, and that was the reason for shifting this over to the parking lot in the first place, so.
God, you're going to make the CSO go crazy.
So, what's that?
So you're going to make the CSO go crazy.
Maybe.
I have a question for you, just for clarity, as I looked at the drawings on page 218, it looked like there was a dotted line outside the paved area. Is that a paved or concrete border around the edge that goes out that far? I asked, when the kids come down that way, that's where they walk, and so I was just curious if we were paving that area as well?
If it's the one I'm thinking, is it a heavy dashed, pretty heavy?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually probably the construction limits, so that's just how far the ground is expected to be disturbed. Nothing physical will be there.
Okay.
So I did have a question out about that line, but the, it sounds like there's, there's curbing also up the access road, so maybe you're describing that differently. Not a curb, it's, but it's a concrete.
The, yeah, city, city code requires that parking lots have curb around the perimeters of them.
Yeah, that is surmountable.
Not even that, it's actually just a ribbon curb, so it's, it's literally just a fat, sorry, flat border that goes around it. I believe it's an.
Like a six, eight inch border that goes around it.
Right, it'll actually look exactly like a vine wood has this, so the water will continue to flow off of. We didn't want to channelize and have to.
Oh, yeah. Trail where that, the connection or something is there?
One of my questions, and I thought if it was a full curb, you're going to lose a whole bunch of parking that obviously is in.
And it would have been very expensive, we would have had to bring the whole lot down or deal with the stormwater, so this allows us to just manage stormwater just as it is today, while still satisfying the city ordinance for the, for the code for the.
And Jason, just because I can, engineering costs of 34 grand, that's just government estimate, right?
It is, we're actually tracking under that.
Near, near, near.
My one dollar.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Sorry, did you want a second? It was your idea in the first place. I take back my second, go ahead. I sold that front end.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, some of these costs, these unit prices from vendor to vendor from, you know.
This wasn't.
Well, I mean, like, yeah, like, you know, obviously an ADA parking sign, we're getting five, but like OMG is $93, then you got four, 12, 50, and it's like, you're going, it's, the sign is right there, like, you got to buy that sign, like, you have it spelled out, like, what, how do you know?
If you look at the markings, too, there's significant difference. One of them has a few cents on per foot of striping and a huge number on per marking for the accessible stalls, the other one is reversed.
They pick up a little more profit on that.
It's like 60 bucks for the message.
I can see like.
A dollar fifty for the, so.
I see if it's a penny here and a 65 cents, or to me, that's, that tells me like, hey, they might have the equipment to do it, or, you know, hey, 65 cents per linear foot has to get farmed out. I mean, everybody else is kind of in that ballgame. I just.
It's always a mystery.
Yeah, exactly, and I know, I know Dave's brought it up in the past, too.
And yet they come in $700 apart.
Sometimes you're really spread out.
That's all I got.
All right, we got a motion, second, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no.
Motion curious, five, zero. And there are no objections, I'll be adjourned.
You can order an hour and a half over.
We're adjourned, yeah.